Mike Test for Tennessee Captioning? 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 I now call the meeting to order. If all are able to and would like to, please rise for the invocation led by Father Philip O. Kennedy of Good Shepherd Catholic Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by retired United States Army Captain Gary Michael Rose.
Let us pray. Lord our God, we acknowledge your presence. We thank you for all of your graces and blessings, most especially the blessing of a free land, participative democracy. We're thankful for peace in our world. In a special way, we gather at City Council to honor one of our own, Mike Rose. We give you praise and thanks, Lord God, for the courage of all of our services who defend our values, our principle, our freedom, our way of life. Help us to live the peace and the gifts you have given us deeply and well in the building up of your kingdom, for the service of other people, for peace, humanity, in our land, in our world. And we make this prayer for the honor and glory of God through Christ our Lord.
Would you face the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father Kennedy, and thank you, Captain Rose. The minutes from the regular council meeting have been received and they'll stand approved if there's no objections. We're now at resolutions of special recognitions. Mayor, you have the floor.
Mr. President, if I could ask the full council to come around front. This is a very special presentation, and I think it's one that everybody would like to work with us. Mike, if you would please come up.
Come on.
Mr. Mayor? Come right up here. Turn around here. Now, as most of you know, and a lot of the people out there, Mike Rose was, received the Medal of Honor this past month at the White House, and he's one of ours who is a recipient of the Medal of Honor. And the Medal of Honor, if you've ever been to visit a group who have the Medal of Honor Gala, as you meet each one of those guys, you will be amazed at the humbleness, at their idea that I was just doing my job, and I did my job, and I just happened to be a recipient of the Medal of Honor, and each one of them says the same thing that Mike said the other night, there are many more people who deserve that. But he is ours, and we are so glad that you have finally received your Medal of Honor. And we have a big whereas, 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 and I will save you the whereas because we might be a little bit older by the time we get finished with all those. But it says, "Now therefore be it resolved that we as the mayor and the members of the Huntsville City Council wish to honor and recognize the bravery and gallantry of his exceptional performance in saving his fellow soldiers, his will to endure his love for his fellow soldiers, his devotion to our country, and continued desire to serve are evidence through his willingness to work in many different settings through coordination with the Knights Columbus and the Good Shepherd Catholic Church, and to make circumstances better and improve life for fellow citizens in our community. Is it with unequaled gratitude that I as mayor and on behalf of the members of the City Council and the citizens of our city, thank you for that same commitment to our fellow man in making this a better community in which to live. And Mike Rose, we give you this, and we say thank you for being a great citizen for us, and also you have honored us as a recipient of the Medal of Honor. Thank you so much."
I'm on. I've said this on several occasions, that there were 16 of us on that operation, and I firmly believe that I drew the short straw, and any one of the other 15 members of that operation could have received this award. And I can't speak for all Vietnam veterans, but in the time that I was in operations in Vietnam, I never saw any individual falter, never turn his way from danger. And I can truly say that I have always been proud to be simply just a member of the United States Army, let alone being recognized at the level which I personally think is well beyond what is due me. So I thank you for this honor, and I thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, Mr. Mayor, and I think you need to get back on to business.
Thank you, Mike, and unless you want to sit here for another hour and watch government at work, this is a good time to exit. Thank you for being here. Like watching Sausage Made.
Councilmembers, we do have a resolution, and I'll read it. Resolution: Recognizing Retired United States Army Captain Gary Michael Rose on receiving the Congressional Medal of Honor for specific acts of heroism during battle in Laos and during the Vietnam War. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Thank you very much. That was a wonderful presentation. We do have a resolution supporting the 9/11 Center Impulse Point. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. This resolution is about a new app they have to help people that go into cardiac arrest, and I guess they picked me to sponsor it because I recently went into cardiac arrest. I ask for your approval on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Is there anyone from the 9/11 Center here that I could present this to? Welcome. Let's go out here. If you would, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the app.
Okay. My name is Chris Tucker. I'm the 9-1 director, and I just want to say thank you to you, Mayor, and to all the City Council for recognizing and supporting this app, which is a multi-agency project that the agencies have gotten together and placed within our community. And basically, the app can be downloaded from the Apple Store or Google Store, and when you download it, it will help you receive CPR notification, or rather cardiac arrest notifications of someone within a quarter-mile radius of where you're located that they're having a CPR event, and you can go over and help them if you know CPR.
How can we learn CPR?
So to learn CPR, there are many organizations throughout Madison County that teach it, but even if you choose not to go to a formal course, the app itself teaches you how to perform CPR. And really, you don't have to be certified in CPR because the app does walk you through how to do it, and it also walks you through how to use an AED or defibrillator.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. We appreciate it. We have one more special recognition. I'd like to ask all the council members to come out front, please. It has always been the council's tradition to honor and recognize the past council president, and it's my privilege to recognize Dr. Robinson. This plaque is a special plaque, Dr. Robinson. It's the exact same one that I gave Sandra Moon after she served as a president. I had the pleasure of following her, and now I have the pleasure of following you, so it's been special for me, our two female presidents, and I want to say you did a great job, and we appreciate you.
Thank you. It was an honor to serve, and it's a relief to not have to do it again.
All right. Now we go back to work. Councilmembers and for the public on the agenda tonight, the administration has asked that we consider 14A by Yam's consent when we get to that, and they'd also asked that we take 15N, O, and P out of order, and we'll do that after communications from the public, so the citizens will have a chance to speak on those items. So now we're at announcements. Mr. Cherry, are you ready to do your presentation?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, if I could kind of kick this off. Chip Cherry, who is President/CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, is going to give a presentation on BOKAR. We have three visitors here. Thank y'all for coming. If y'all would stand for just a minute, just so everybody can get to know who you are, we had Garrett Dressler, Justin Rumor, and Marcella Barera? Is that close enough? Okay. But thank y'all so much for being here, and these are our representatives of our new partners in business who will be our partners in Huntsville. So thank you for being here tonight, and we appreciate it.
I'm going to try to represent Shane tonight in making this presentation because you normally get to hear from him. But this morning, we announced Project Codename DOL, which is BOKAR. They are a Tier One automotive supplier. They have had a competitive process. Over 40 communities were considered for this particular project throughout the southeast. They are a very, very strong company in that what they do is a very interesting niche. It's a, the mayor and I had the opportunity to visit their research facility and development facility right outside of Detroit, and when you look at all the products they make, it's very interesting what they're able to do in some of the leading-edge applications of metals and plastics and automotive applications. You can see here some of the components that they produce highlighted on these two slides, and they will be making products for these particular automotive OEMs that are located on, are actually indicated on this slide. So the Toyota, Audi, Ford, Nissan, GM, Chrysler, Honda, Volkswagen, and the one that's missing would be Mercedes is also one of their primary people that they supply to. This particular project will be located up in limestone county portion of the city of Huntsville. They will build a 230,000-square-foot facility. Their site allows them to expand that additional 420,000 square feet for a total of 650,000 square feet that they have the option to be able to grow into. The initial employment will be 305 is what they have committed to in the development agreement. We anticipate, as do they, that that facility will grow up to 400 employees, and the average wage blended over throughout the enterprise is $19.05 an hour plus fringe benefits. Their capital investment are $115 million. The incentive being provided by the community, the first incentive will be the extension of sanitary sewer to the site. The other two incentives will be shared by the city of Huntsville and limestone county, and they're performance-based as they phase in operations and grow the facility. So there's a total of $400,000 commitment from the city of Huntsville and $400,000 from limestone county. There are protections, as there are with all of the agreements that we have where we provide public resources. We work very hard to make sure that we protect those, so we have recourse in there in a 10-year job performance period for this particular project. The site is located off of Bob Garrett Road, adjacent to South Point Industrial Park. And the return on investment, and these are, I believe Shane wanted to share with you kind of how the city would recapture its investment. So you see here that total projected taxes, the annual payroll, and the property taxes over a multi-year period give a very strong return on the community's investment in this particular project. Also, the ROI you can see is also very strong. When you can look at the total ROI, which is the bright green line there, bar there, you can see that we have a very strong positive return over the 10-year performance period of this particular project. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Councilmembers, do you have questions? Mr. Keith?
Yes, sir. Just a quick question. Maybe I missed it. Are these relocation jobs, or is this completely?
New.
New. Just completely new. That's wonderful.
Sorry.
Yeah, maybe I'm thinking too far down the line, but in bringing them, does this become sort of bait as we think about bringing in larger manufacturers, potentially?
No, this is part of the advanced manufacturing ecosystem that we have in our community. The nice thing about this project and why it's a really good fit for us is they work in advanced materials, and they're not a commodity producer. So they're not making things with very thin margins. They're making things that are hard to produce. We have a very rich history in our market of being able to solve complex problems and bring those new technologies to bear on issues. BOKAR is very accomplished and very well-respected within the industry for tackling difficult challenges. They make in structural components and other things that are very complex, and this facility will be a cutting-edge facility within the automotive industry. So it's not one of those things that's going to be a minimum wage. It's a very strong company for us, and will provide great opportunities for people in the market that want to be able to work in advanced manufacturing.
All right. And last question, much to like the Polaris point. When we talk about jobs, at what point would you, and maybe you can just give a guess, maybe you can give it to me later, when do we expect that we can say, or do they feel that they can say, "We're hiring"? When is that expected? You can apply for this job for BOKAR. Start.
They will be working through AIDT. AIDT will develop a training program and also advertise these jobs and make them available. We have not gotten a final construction estimate as far as how long it's going to take them to ramp up their facility. I know they're very anxious to get to, start moving dirt and get it to go vertical, so we will have more information on that, and I can update you on that in a future meeting, but I do not have a firm timeline as far as jobs availability.
Okay. Thank you.
I might say, Mr. Keith, you know, probably anticipated 19, sometime in 2019 would be a pretty good target date on that, and you know, they will be, you know, their employment, the 400 people, is a ramp up over a seven-year period, if I remember the development agreement right. So 19 would be the start of that, and by 26, they would end up with the full, obligated for the full 400 employees, or 305 employees.
Thank you. Dr. Robinson, do you have questions, comments?
And just to reiterate, because there's a lot of information on those slides, their investment in this project is?
$115 million.
$115 million. And how does that compare to investments of, let's say, Polaris?
Polaris, I think, was, it started out at about $130 million, and it grew, probably it's probably $150, $160 million right now.
So that, when I heard that, that gives context for how huge this project is. And I think we look at the number of jobs, and we lose sight of the investment that they are making in this, in this community. What is it that we are bringing to the table with this project?
So we are providing, this site currently could not be developed without sewer being provided to the site, so we are providing, extending sewer to that particular site, which allows for development of other sites, and then $400,000 to support them as they ramp up. The, I think the big plus is whenever you locate a project like this, you have to have a lot of faith in the community. Mayor Battle and Chairman Yarborough, both, I think, connected with the company, and they feel confident that the community will support them as they work through the process of ramping up in the long term. These types of investments are viewed by companies as being a, I mean, this company's getting ready to celebrate its 30th year producing parts for the automotive industry in 50 years in business, and they look out over the horizon as this being a very long-term investment and a long-term relationship with the community. So that stability and vision that you as elected officials and other partners that will be working with them are critically important when they make this kind of decision. So I think it's the workforce, AIDT, state, local community, and the relationship they would have with all those entities, being able to move forward, be successful long term.
And if I could piggyback on that also, as we were talking at the announcement today, one of the things they're looking for is a great workforce, motivated workforce, a smart workforce, one that has been trained through the education system to be career-ready. They're looking for a good cost of living because their workers will be working in our community and have to live in our community, so they want to be able to have a cost of living that makes it affordable for them to live here, and you know, and a transportation system and an infrastructure system which we are providing. So when you put all those together and add to it a quality of life, that is what actually brings people here.
And then I will just make one last comment today. At the announcement, Chairman Yarborough made a great point, and that was that it took a team to put this together, and he gave credit to Mayor Battle for the work on that team, and Mayor Battle would never admit that, but it is a great partnership with the chamber as well.
I echo the partnership, yes.
So thank you. Thank you for that partnership, and Mayor Battle, thank you for what you did to make all of it happen, and welcome, BOKAR.
Mr. Culver, questions, comments?
Yes, thank you. Just a comment. So just to kind of put everything in perspective, for $115 million investment, and we're putting in $200,000-plus infrastructure is, is just amazing to me, and we'll recoup that in less than really a year and a half. I think that's just awesome. And just to kind of give a perspective of the size of this facility, I think most people can identify with the former, then Madison Square Mall. So this facility, when completed with this reserved expansions, will be about a third of the size of Madison Square Mall, which was 1.5 million square feet. So we're looking at about 600,000 square feet. And this is some awesome work, Mayor, done by you and the chamber and other teams, all of us involved. Just another good thing that's going on in a great city. So my thanks to all of you, and considering this is the district that I'm so blessed to represent, had to throw that in. So thank you all so kindly.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? We'll be taking these up later in the meeting.
And I would like just to say thank you to Shane and the entire team because he's not here to say thank you tonight, but a lot of work goes on to put these things together, and he does a yeoman's task, and everybody else on the team as well. Thank you.
Thank you. One more announcement. We are in holiday schedule. The City Council will meet December 7th and December 21st, which is the first and third weeks of December instead of our normal second and fourth. So December 7th and December 21st are our meeting dates. We have no business with outside legal representation at this time. We do have public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 17-808 zoning 5.99 acres of newly annexed property lying on the north side of Cherry Tree Road and east of Esslinger Drive to Residence 2 District. This was set October 12th, 2017, at the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This zoning request is newly annexed property. It's approximately 5.99 acres. This property is located on the north side of Cherry Tree Road and east of Esslinger Drive. This property will serve as an additional phase, as well as an additional ingress/egress point for the proposed Wilson Co. subdivision. The planning staff would like to propose a zoning designation of Residence 2, which was recommended by Planning Commission.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 17-810 zoning .86 acres of newly annexed property lying east of Highway 431 South and on the east side of Wade Road to Highway Business C4 District. This was set October 12th, 2017, at the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This only request is also newly annexed property. This property is approximately .86 acres. This property is located on the east side of 431 South and on the east side of Wade Road. Planning staff would like to propose a zoning designation of Highway Business C4, which is consistent with the adjacent property, south, immediately south of this particular property. It has the same property owner, and he would like to combine these two properties into one lot in the future, and this also was recommended by Planning Commission.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the City Clerk Treasurer to assess the cost for the cutting of grass and weeds on certain properties that were non-compliance of the grass and weed ordnance. Mr. Irwin, please introduce yourself. Welcome.
Scott Irwin, Community Development. Mr. Russell, this is a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the City Clerk Treasurer to assess the cost of the cutting, removing of grass and weeds against certain properties. The resolution before you authorizes the assessment for the 31 properties. Eight of these properties have out-of-state owners. The total cost is $7,175, and average per-property cost of $231. All procedural requirements for declaring, removing, and billing for the grass cutting and cleanup has been completed in accordance with your city code. We're asking that an assessment be authorized to be placed on the property submitted to you. Property owners were notified by first-class mail that tonight's City Council meeting would be the time and place at which time he or she may appear to present any objections for the assessed cost.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this issue? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, seconded by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at communications from the public. When I call your name, please go to available microphone, and you'll have three minutes to address the council. Ms. Ava Malone. Is Ms. Malone here? Ms. Malone. All right. Frances Acreage, Ms. Acreage?
Thank you, Councilwoman Russell. I am here because I was excited to hear about the council's approval of monies available to the Huntsville Police Department to shop for new records management system. I had correspondence with, who I think are reliable people within the police department, and I've been told that the intent for public access online to police records, crime records... and I've been told that the intent for public access online to police records, crime reports specifically, that they'll wait and see what the bid is that's accepted, and see if that capability is part of that package. That is unacceptable to many people. I have seventy-eight names that I've collected just in the last seventy-two hours, and I'll give those to you for your reference. We have the utmost respect for the Huntsville Police Department. We, at the Northeast Huntsville Civic Association, got together and even did a thousand peace crane garland two years, about a year ago. And we tried to make time to, anyway, we, we did that, and we always have had lots of respect. But we've had very painful experience trying to get reports from the police department. I have a statement from Ms. Jean Arnt of Melbourne. She started, I'll use her first voice. "I started a community watch group four years ago after a rash of break-ins. This is for Melbourne, Wooddale, Stevens, and Bydaway. We think we made a big difference with our community watch. It seems to be fewer, but the police won't tell us if it's made a difference. Four years of not knowing if it's making a difference is unacceptable. We, members of the Northeast Huntsville Civic Association and other residents of Huntsville, want access to crime reports for our neighborhoods online. We also want the RFP for the, the request for proposal, for the new records management software, to include that capability in the RFP. And we also want to see it implemented with the winning bid. How can I be assured that the RFP will include public access online?"
Have you finished?
I am.
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll get that issue, there's another speaker on it, and we'll, we'll talk about it after that speaker.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Jason Hennessy?
Who do I give this to?
Mr. Alcivar?
Yes, sir, Jason Hennessy, I'm sorry. I just signed in as a attendant, I didn't have anything to speak on.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, city council members.
Good evening.
I support what Mr. Alcvarish, Ms. Francis said, and I just want you to know that I am also a coordinator of the community watch for the Cloys Avenue. And it would be really very beneficial that such information be accessible to all. You know, it, it's, it's just to be informed of what's going on. And before I finish, I want to express my infinite gratitude, Mr. Mayor, and all of you council members, for your commitment to progress, especially the project that you all have over here for downtown. Thank you, thank you for your public service.
Thank you, sir. Councilmembers and Mayor, I have talked to the police chief, and he's working on this issue. Mr. Hamilton, do you have anything else to add?
I, I don't. There's, you know, there's a number of things related to what, what they're asking for. We have not, I, I haven't seen anything on the RFP yet, so we'll just need to take, you know, what they're asking for and look at exactly what systems are out there and what, what the RFP says. I don't, I don't have any information on it right now.
You just kind of just briefly explain the process, so the citizens will know. An RFP is issued, then what will happen after that?
Yeah, I mean, it, it will go out and be open for a period of time. It gives, it gives any of those willing or interested in bidding a, a level playing field opportunity to, to bid on those. Obviously, that will establish specific criteria to qualify. Oftentimes, we get people who bid on things, and, and their bid is not qualifying at all, so they would be discarded. So, then any qualifying bids would be reviewed. Oftentimes, and I'm not saying it's necessarily the case here, but oftentimes, the, the primary criteria is price. But also, sometimes with complex systems like this, there's other criteria that would go into, it won't necessarily be just the lowest price at all, so there's functionality requirements and things. And so, all of that would be written into the RFP, into the bid process, and then they will be evaluated on that criteria in an open public forum. So, there's a lot of, a lot of things that we need in that system, and we're working to put that together now. And, and what they're asking for, quite honestly, I, I think we'd be hard-pressed to find a system that did not offer the functionality that they're offering, as, as opposed to the opposite.
And at the end, the council's going to approve or not approve the contract?
Absolutely, yes.
And so, there'll be many chances for the public to be involved in this?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Keith?
Ms. Acreage, you bring up a very important point. I do want to sort of give an ode to the police department, recently had a town hall specific just to crime and information. There has been a ridiculous amount of misinformation about crime in northwest Huntsville, and it is extremely important that we get out the right information. People were extremely surprised, actually, of how scattered the crime and homicides have been in the area, and that certain streets who felt like only crime happened on their streets, they saw that other streets had experienced the same thing. That ready data that other cities have, like in Nashville, Chattanooga, and other places, comes in phases. And I am going to, in every sense, I've been doing this for the whole year, try and get behind the charge, or even lead it, about getting the right information around crime and fighting crime in a new and innovative way. That being said, the RFP offers an opportunity to just hear proposals. No decision has been made of what we will do, what record system. But the fact that we have put money behind just that, increasing records, I have to give my hat, or tip my hat, to the police department for understanding its importance. But to, you know, both of you who have said it's important to have information about the things that you're doing and that they're working, I think I can probably speak for all of our council members up here, that we absolutely agree. We are citizens too. I would love to know about the crime that happens in my street, my neighborhood, and how it's affecting not only, you know, my quality of life, my property value, what areas in, in the community need more community watch, the list goes on. So, I just want to let you know, that does not fall on deaf ears. It is a process. Unfortunately, as everybody will tell you, up here, government moves a little bit slower than molasses. So, it, it will be a process, but I can promise you, we are working towards the same end that you have when you were speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kling?
Mr. President, I don't think this would solve with what the residents are asking for, but in my own situation, I found that we've gotten a lot of good information from the community resource officers who have had contact with some of our West Huntsville neighborhood associations. Possibly the CROs would be able to provide some information that would give the folks some answers to some of the questions that they're looking for. Again, it's not a solve everything, but it might be of some help in the short term.
Thank you. Any, anyone else want to comment on that? Ms. Jackie Reed?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank you for laying public input, and I also want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving this week, and give thanks, please. Tell somebody you love them. But I'll tell you all I love you before I start, because I've got a lot on my mind tonight. Anyway. I just have to say that, because I thought he was a good, good at what he did. I got a question, big question. Why in the world, and who is a planner in this city of Huntsville? I was trying to cut across Monroe Street over here the other day, cross the street from Marriott. You took that whole corner, you got to almost have a wreck to turn that corner right there. How much property are you giving city center? How much do they need over there? Don't turn that light on yet, I'm not quitting. But anyway, if you go down there and look, whoever planned, planned it, I hope to God you didn't pay somebody to do that. I want every, this whole city to come over here and see this corner, cross the street from the Marriott, and see what planning we're doing in this city. It's absolutely ridiculous. We gave him seven acres. John Larry Road, the, the road, Larry Road's never been finished trying to get some development in there. How much property does that man need to develop that property? Y'all go over and look at it, it's a disgrace. You know, the schools are in a mess in this city. I do not want this city in a bigger mess as a school system is with the planning that you all are doing. Stop and think, and get together, and collaborate, and try to beat what the school system turned into. I don't want the city looking like what's happened. Anyway, I'm back on City Hall. This is really, really bothering me too. Is it true, I like to see the letter of intent that's to twelve thirty-one, y'all've got a letter of intent, you've all okayed it, that what you're going to do with this City Hall, tear it down, this property and the one next door, and you've got a letter of intent to give it to Triad Properties? Is that true? Put, build this building right back exactly when you tear these two down, right back where they are. This property, if I could hit the lottery, I'd buy this property. You'd have to do, uh, uh, find out what it's worth, which I know you haven't, and, and find out what this property's worth, I'd buy it from you. And you'd have to build it back, surely to God. Put this property right back where it is on this property, and when you start tearing it down, I want to know, because I'm going to take pictures, and I'm, I'm watching every one of you that take that vote. You all sign the letter of intent, some of you up for reelection, and then two more years, some more of you.
Ms. Reed, your time's up.
You want me to sit down?
If, if that's what you'd like to do, you're welcome.
I'll be back, I'm not through, thank you.
Mr. Thomas Piff?
I've got a list of nine questions. Do you want them before I start, or after?
Mr. Piff, it's up to you. Mr. Piff, if you speak in the microphone, please. Go ahead, Mr. Piff.
Thomas Piff, one one three one four, Delkris Drive, Huntsville, Alabama. Mayor Battle and city council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to have a public conversation with you today. What I have here is a list of nine questions the public will want answered openly and transparently, before you sign any more contracts in our name with private developer Triad Properties. One, is John Hamilton's November ninth forty-million-dollar projected taxpayer cost of replacing City Hall still valid today? And how will you prevent final costs from going up the way the final costs of the Huntsville Madison County Jail did? Question two, what will be the number of stories and the square footage of the replacement City Hall if the decision is made to put it at the current municipal garage location? Question three, how many years do you think this replacement City Hall will effectively serve Huntsville's growing population in this one location, before we outgrow its capacity to serve us properly? Question four, for planning purposes, what other locations have been considered, and which are actively being considered now? Question five, how many spaces are there in the existing and the proposed municipal garages? And how high will the proposed garage have to be? Question six, very important, how does Triad's proposal to the citizens of Huntsville stack up against other developers' offers and ideas? Seven, also for the record, were any other offers sought by our city officials? If so, by and from whom? On February three, WHNT reported Mayor Battle's initial instincts about our City Hall property, and I quote, quote, "Likely it becomes part of Big Spring Park," said Battle. "That's one of the mainstays I've had out of all the conversations. We may be able to add to the park. There are a lot of great elevations here. You could sit up here and look out over the park," end quote. Mayor Battle, what made you override your initial instincts between February three and July twenty-seven? Number nine, finally, why is it so imperative for you to enter into this forever sale of our City Hall property to private developer Triad Properties, before we even know the firm details about any future City Hall and the commission studies to that end? These are the questions begging open and transparent questions. Answers. I trust you will take this conversation to all of Huntsville through our local newspapers, radio stations, and television stations before you sign any more contracts on this consequential matter in our names.
Mr. Piff, your time's up.
One sentence. We can never undo this forever sale-
Hold on one second, please.
...once it's done.
Sir! Councilmember, is that okay? Please go ahead.
We can never undo this forever sale once it's done. We can never unring this bell. Thank you, one and all.
Thank you, Mr. Piff. Councilmembers, as we discussed, we're going to tell you, the chair requests to take fifteen N, O, and P out of order.
Mr. President, before we move to N, O, and P, can I, can I give a little bit of response here?
Sure, if you'd like to.
There are, there are no contracts that have been signed on this property, on this development, on the idea of where we're going. There has been a letter of intent. A letter of intent is not a binding contract, and in no way is it a binding contract. It just tells the intent of the two parties who are working together on this. You know, why would, Mr. Piff wants to know why my initial instincts to, that we wanted to make this property part of Big Spring Park, why did I change? Changed because of planners. We asked planners to come in to give us very professional opinions, and those planners worked with our planners. We had numerous open public meetings, and the open public meetings came through and said that they wanted something different here. They wanted a development that looked very nice, and that was iconic, that would build something that would be of value to the city. That is the reason that I changed my mind. And I did change my mind. When we, when you go with, when you have planners, that's why you pay them, that's why you ask them to come in, that's why you ask them to give your opinion, that's why you ask your staff to give your opinion, and your staff planners. That's why you have open meetings and open, and, and open charrettes, where so citizens can say something about it, and have their opinion be reflected. That is the reason that we came up with a plan that we came up with today. There is no contract. This is, right now, we are at the developmental stage of this whole plan. That's why we brought it out this early, so that we could have everybody included as we went through the developmental plan of this, of the redevelopment of this whole area. That's why we started with a, with a letter of intent. That's why we are moving along with this at a very slow, steady pace, to make sure that we get everybody's input as we come along, even Mr. Piff's in, input as we go along. We may not agree with the input, but we will take the input, and then we will put it together in the best way that we can with our staff that we have and with our planning ability. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. And I remind the council, and for the public's benefit, we're working towards a work session on Tuesday, December twelfth. We don't have the time set up, it'll be there at five or six in these chambers, and we'll make a public announcement when it's all done. But it will be to discuss the, the City Hall and, and what we should do. So, there'll be more information at that meeting. We're going to take fifteen N, O, and P out of order. Fifteen N is a resolution authorizing Mayor into a purchase and sale agreement between the city of Huntsville and the Fennel Speake Family Limited Partnership. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver, discussion. Would anybody have questions? This is for the Bokar land.
Could we learn a little bit more about this?
Sure.
This is the option on the property that is going to be used for the development, and this transfers that option to the, to the Bokar Group.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. O is a resolution authorizing Mayor into a purchase and sale agreement between the city of Huntsville and Bokar US Inc. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson, discussion. Mayor Battle, do you-
I'm sorry, this, this is just what we went through. This is the development agreement that puts, puts the whole agreement together and tells you what we will be investing, what our, how we have our clawbacks in there to, to guarantee and to protect the taxpayers' money, and it basically ties together our full partnership with, with, with the company.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rob.
You may want to take P before O to get in the proper order. P does relate to the development.
Actually, P comes after O?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It, it shouldn't on this occasion.
Okay. Uh, let's see.
Something to eat tonight. Uh, we, we still have a little bit of business left. Thank you.
We're now at eight, item eight, Huntsville Utilities. 8A is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute the Wireline Pole Attachment Regulation Amendment to the TVA Power Contract. The chair moves for approval. Second by Dr. Robinson. Mayor, will you explain this? I'm joking. Mr. Gertis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Joe Gertis, Huntsville Utilities. Uh, this is just amending our power contract to basically, uh, allow TVA to step into, uh, the role of regulating our pole attachments. This is a valley-wide effort, um, and this is, uh, a good time for TVA to occupy this role. It's very complicated, but, uh, this will make TVA take a standard approach to pole attachments across the valley.
Okay, and, and my constituents love this issue. Is this like the poles in front of our residential streets? Cuz they're always complaining about the wires hanging off them, or is this big, big power poles?
Generally, it's all the utility poles within our distribution system which would include the poles on your street.
So we're gonna have a uniform hookup for the poles, and we're gonna all see the poles are gonna look identical and things like that?
This is a lot more, uh, in terms of what it costs for companies to attach their equipments to our, our equipment to our poles or their equipment to our poles, uh, just establishing a standard rate. So far as the construction standard, that's something we regulate, and the good news there, Councilman, is all this make-ready work that we're doing for the fiber construction is addressing a lot of that and cleaning a lot of that up as we go. So two different issues.
Okay, but you understand that we get a lot of calls and complaints about the, the way the wires look and, uh, the way the poles look? So we would appreciate your help on that. I know Lyle Voiles will rest easy tonight.
Yes, sir, and, uh, I, I will say that we work, uh, with the mayor's office and with the See Click Fix, uh, capabilities, and I think we've made some great improvements, uh, but we still have a way to go.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, Mr. Keith.
Now, to your knowledge, it's just, and we just discussed this earlier, is this different from the franchise agreement that would be needed if, say, a cell company wanted to add a booster or something to the pole? Or is that the same line of?
This would fall under that as I understand it. Uh, now, my, our CEO is here, and he's, he understands this at a much higher level than I do.
Mr. Kelly, if you'll introduce yourself, please.
Yes, this is Wes Kelly, Huntsville Utilities.
Welcome.
Thank you. This relates to just wireline attachments, so wires on the poles. Small cell attachments or other type of equipment would not be regulated in this way. That regulation is still pending at TVA.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
Do any other councilmembers have questions, concerns?
Mr. Voiles isn't the only one that has concerns about this. There are lots of other residents that are constantly contacting us, and I guess the greatest complaint that we have is that the, the companies who are using these poles are not responsive to those complaints for those wires to be taken care of. So just because they signed this agreement, I hope there's something in there that ensures that they will in fact comply and comply quickly to requests.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. As Mr. Gertis said, this involves the financial transaction so that TVA is regulating consistently across the valley on how we charge for pole attachments. Now, the mechanisms that are involved in the actual attachments, that's something that is separate agreements. Huntsville Utilities has 18 such agreements, and we need to make sure that when we put new agreements in place, that we have better enforcement mechanisms.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Voting on 8A, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. 8B is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase outside services for the installation of electric meters and replacing existing meters with AMI meters. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Mr. Gertis, please explain this and tell everybody what AMI meters are.
Absolutely. That's a advanced metering infrastructure, uh, what's commonly referred to as smart meters. These three items are not the meters themselves. This simply appropriates the money for us to award the contract to be the installation vendor. Uh, in this case, uh, we want to award that bid to Aclara Smart Grid Solutions. Uh, they're a company that, with a lot of experience in this space. Uh, they're based in St. Louis, Missouri. They will be hiring some local folks to do this work, some of this work, and, uh, they do also, I think it's important that you know, they do show a preference to veterans.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Just for the-
Dr. Robinson.
For the public's information, how much will it cost and over what period of time?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so again, different, two different issues, uh, because we're not talking about the project itself.
I mean, the service agreement.
But this, this agreement, uh, in, in the case of item B, uh, appropriates, uh, estimated $2.8 million for the, uh, purchase of outside services for the installation of electric meters and replacing existing meters with advanced metering.
Further discussion?
Just a, a general question. Uh, I think we've kinda been over it for a long period of time. Y'all been through the process, and of course, this is the, you know, the go-ahead to, to do this. But you're satisfied, all the concerns people have brought up about radio frequency, you know, dangers and stuff like that, all the information. I know there's been some pro, some con, but, uh, you're comfortable that whatever we do get for the citizens of the Huntsville area, it will be safe and will be cost-effective. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Kling. And, and as I pointed out at the last meeting, I, I do think it's important that our customers know we are certainly not on the cutting edge here. Uh, we are the last of the big eight TVA utilities to proceed down this path. Um, most of them are close to fully, if not fully implemented with this technology. It's not new technology. It's tested and true. Most of the RF, uh, concerns are unfounded. Most people get more radio frequency radiation from the wireless networks in their house or the cell phones that they carry on their hips. So, um, this is an intermittent signal that does not cause any harm based on the research that's been done.
Further discussion? Mr. Culver.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. Gertis, uh, this particular company out of St. Louis that you have recommended, did they perform any of the other TVA sites installations?
Ooh, that's a great question. Uh, so we have a representative from Aclara here, Memphis. So MLGW did use Aclara for their deployment.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Councilmembers, a call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. C is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase outside services for the installation of gas AMI modules.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Gertis.
Uh, again, same sort of issue here, uh, and the estimated appropriation is $1.2 million.
Thank you. Questions from Mr. Gertis? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. D is a resolution authorizing approval to purchase outside services for the installation of water AMI modules and changing out obsolete water meters.
Move to approve the resolution, sir.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by Mr. Keith. Discussion. Any questions from Mr. Gertis?
The cost of the installation?
Yes, ma'am. $4.5 million.
Thank you.
Further comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have no board appointments to be voted on. Do we have any board appointment nominations? Hearing none. We're at 10 approval expenditures. 10A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Mr. Keith.
Yes, sir. I move for the pa- the payment of vouchers in the amount of $10,070,438.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Keith, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Mr. Keith, do you have a finance committee report?
No, sir, not present.
Thank you. Mayor Battle?
Uh, Mr. President, for the record, uh, I would like to make the following appointments. Mr. Delmanise Dale Smith to the Huntsville Housing Authority for a five-year term to expire August 14th, 2022. Reappointment of Kimberly Ford to the Benton Wilcoxen Iceplex Board for a three-year term to expire November 20th, 2020. Uh, reappointment of Fred Hudson to the Benton Wilcoxen Iceplex Board for a term to expire November 20th, 2019. Um, we would also, there's a bunch of announcements here. Uh, it is coming up on Thanksgiving next weekend. We would like to tell everybody Happy Thanksgiving. We hope that you have great turkey, uh, and dressing and gravy and everything else that goes with Thanksgiving. And also, uh, City Hall will be closed on November 24th, Friday. So if you want to come down to City Hall on Friday, November 24th, you won't be able to get in. So, um, just wanna make sure everybody understands that. Uh, we will have Tensile Trail beginning on November 24th, which is also Friday. Even though City Hall won't be open, Tensile Trail will be opening at 6:30 with the tree lighting ceremony at 6:30 in Big Spring Park. And as a part of the mayor's walking challenge, we'll have the Tensile Trail trot that you can work off some of the turkey that you have gained, uh, that you have had on Sunday, November 26th at 4:30. And then Galaxy of Lights Walking Night, uh, it starts through, tonight, today through November 21st, and Driving Nights will be November 24th through December 31st. Skating in the Park starts tomorrow. Uh, you can get ahead of your turkey that you're gonna eat on Thanksgiving, uh, at 4:00 PM in the back of the art museum. So we will kick that off at 4:00 PM, uh, and then there will be a Christmas tree lighting tomorrow night, uh, at Bridge Street. If you want to go out there, go early, uh, there will be, there's always a lot of traffic out there. And finally, uh, the Mayor's Cup Tennis Match is, uh, is at the Huntsville Athletic Club, uh, 3:00 PM, uh, on Sunday. And proceeds for those attending and giving money and playing in the Mayor's Cup Tennis, um, uh, Tennis, uh, Match, it will benefit Suzie's Wish. Um, lots of announcements, lots of things happening. It's getting into holiday season. There will be even more going on, but to everybody out there, um, let's remember our blessings. Uh, this is Thanksgiving, and we should be thankful for an awful lot. We are very fortunate, fortunate to have everything that we have in this community and, uh, to live where we do. So, uh, to all have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Mr. Keith.
Uh, thank you. Um, quickly, I just wanted to say happy birthday to, uh, the young man on the dice, belated birthday, I guess you could say, from Mr. Councilman Kling. I don't know what number I'm supposed to use right here, but happy birthday to you.
Well, thank you. That's, uh, that's actually passed, but, uh, when you get to be by age, we, we don't really keep track of that.
Um, I wanna say thank you to the police department for the meeting that we had in North Precinct. Our numbers have increased. It has been a blessing to see what was originally six individuals who cared about these things turning into 16, turning into 26 and 34. The chief did a wonderful job of relaying information. Captain Rice had a beautiful presentation. Individuals are receiving information through these presentations. It is just a new way to communicate, and it's very impactful for people to know factual numbers. Um, if I could get Ms. Martin to come up quickly, or, okay, thank you, Jim. Um, I had my meeting with North, uh, with the Huntsville Housing. Uh, if you were at the last meeting, I had to set up with the housing, uh, authority. Um, I guess since Shane is not here, I just, I'll give the reference. Um, and maybe, I, if I can get, maybe Joy, I'll ask the question. Basically, we walked away believing that the best step to take, counsel, would still be the bush, um, the berm, I don't even know the, the term.
Fence.
Yeah, so the, the issue, and something I personally wanna say is, I don't think the fence actually does what we want it to do. Um, I think that there is a, I don't even know the name of the bush that they were giving an example that people wouldn't wanna walk through, um, would do everything we needed to do, cuts the cost. The board members that I spoke with at the meeting were, um, absolutely on board with it. Uh, there will definitely have to be some sense of a communication between, do we, do we pay to put it in, or do they pay to put it in and they take care of it? That meeting is set up for Monday. Shane won't get back until Tuesday, so he'll have a chance to talk. Um, but I, I truly do believe that we have to do something. Um, and again, that doesn't mean that we are gonna stop every accident, but I imagine there are a number of accidents that have not caused, you know, or ended in death, uh, due to individuals crossing over. So I just wanted to give that reference as probably, I don't know if we'll have to make it a resolution, but I did make that meeting, and again, I think our best bet for those two parts between crosswalk one and two to point number seven, and then the 600-foot, I think the best answer that not only the community wanted as well as the housing authority would just be the bushes. So I just wanted to follow up with that. Um, and also, we'll, we'll talk about it later on. Um, and Ms. Ms. Jordan is here. I wanted to say thank you to everybody who was involved, um, with the council, uh, meeting, um, and we'll get to it, um, in the future part of the meeting, but I just wanna say thank you to Ms. Jordan and her team and everybody that has sorta got us to this point. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, President.
Thank you. Dr. Robinson.
We had the opportunity tonight to, we had the opportunity tonight to recognize a genuine hero, Captain Gary Mike Rose. Uh, he gave each one of us a coin that has the, the Medal of Honor on it, and it, and this will be, um, I will, I will be honored to have this displayed in my office. But, but I wanna tell you a story about Mike Rose that, that didn't get told in that resolution and doesn't have anything to do with his military service. Uh, Captain Rose lives in my district, in District 3, and shortly after I was elected, he sent me an email asking for my help because he was volunteering with his Knights of Columbus group from Good Shepherd Church, and they were helping to clear debris and overgrowth from, uh, a home in District 3 where a couple lived. Um, the, the husband, I believe, had Alzheimer's, the wife had suffered a stroke. They were incapable of caring for that property, and he asked for extra pickups from the city and help from Green Team to take care of the property. And just out of curiosity, I drove over to the property. I could not see the house from the pile of debris that was piled up that Captain Rose and those working with him had been able to clear. It was probably one of the finest acts of selfless service in the interest of the community that I have seen. So Captain Rose's heroics go, we're not only on the battlefield, he has continued to serve our community, and, and I'm so grateful we could recognize him tonight. I also want to, uh, comment on the community conversation that was held earlier this week at Grissom High School. Uh, and I thank Dr. Aiken, the superintendent, Ms. Ballantyne, the principal, and Ms. Lisa Farrell, the school board representative, for holding that community conversation. It was much needed. It was timely. It gave people a chance to express their concerns, and it was very, very clear that parents expect two things, academic excellence, for which Grissom has always been recognized, and the safety and security of their students. A commitment came away that night, and Dr. Aiken has already honored that commitment for transparent communication and to make sure that, that security issues are dealt with in a timely and firm manner. And he's, they've already demonstrated it so far, and I have full confidence that they will do what they need to do to make sure that Grissom provides the safety and security that parents, uh, that students deserve and that parents have come to expect. Finally, I held a town hall meeting this week. The purpose of the town hall meeting was to give updates on overpasses and the Hazland Road Extension and, um, and the building of the, the new City Hall. I had, uh, staff there. Uh, Ms. Martin was there. Um, she brought, uh, Mr. Clements from her department, uh, Mr. Gleason from her department, and, uh, Mr. Hamilton also came, Aldott staff came. And after they gave their wonderful presentations, answered questions from the audience, I told the audience that I bring staff to these town hall meetings, not only so they get really good information, but so that they can see firsthand the quality of the professional staff that we have in the city. We have wonderful department heads. We have really smart people doing the work for the city. They are so responsive to our citizens, and I, and it, I just love being able to showcase them so that the public can see that firsthand. We saw evidence of that responsiveness also in the last few weeks, as the engineering staff and public works and, and a number of other folks worked together to build a 15-foot earthen dam at the base of the Stone Mark, uh, mountain, uh, or Mathis Mountain. Uh, this was the area that was flooded in August, and the residents have told me they have walked the length of that dam and that they are so pleased and that they feel that that dam is better than the retaining wall that was there that washed away. So again, thanks to the staff for their responsiveness. So in the spirit of Thanksgiving, um, we are very blessed in this city to have great very blessed in this city to have great people working for us, caring for our neighborhoods, lending to the quality of life. And we are just so fortunate to live in a place like that.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President. Next Monday night, I'll be holding my monthly Town Meeting, 6 o'clock at the library. And everyone is, is welcome to come. And as we know, next Thursday, as been mentioned, is Thanksgiving. So certainly want to join everybody to wish the community and my fellow Council members a very happy Thanksgiving and hope everyone has a chance to eat plenty of turkey and to enjoy the holiday and the fellowship. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Kling. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Engineering and our other City Department Heads were very busy over the last week. Dr. Robinson, we had a Town Hall, November the 7th, at Williams Middle School. And I don't want to get into calling all of the names, but Kathy Martin and her Engineering Team were there. They showed up and showed out. And so did Joey McKee and her team. And our Chief, as always, attends our meetings and his staff. And I hope I'm not leaving anyone out. The Chief, District Fire Chief, Mr., well, Mr. McFallon and his staff, his District Fire Chief showed up on his behalf. And we, we had a great time. The, the whole purpose of that meeting, Mayor, was to kind of educate the Zert Road and Martin Road residents, what's happening with those projects. And I'm happy to say, Garver, Scott, Scott Leach with Garver came out, and Aldot Team. And you all, Ms. Martin, provided very, very invaluable information. And Mayor, I want you to know, I thank you for allowing your Department Heads and staff to come out. I did do all I could to take the brunt of the whippings that were going on there that night. But in the end, we left there victoriously, the residents and our teams, because I've given them a commitment that we're going to have both of those projects, Zert Road, which only has one phase left, and Martin Road. We're going to run them concurrently as we move forward with those projects. Altogether, we're going to be finished in that area in 30 months. So in 30 months, I'll still be here. That's two and a half years. Good Lord's will, and I live, and He delays His coming. And we're going to break some champagne bottles in that area when we, when we get it done. So that's my promise to the residents there. Also, I want to thank Mr. Tommy Brown and his team, Randy and, and, and Mr. Wampler and all of the drivers. Mayor, thank you again for allowing us to use the buses and vans. It was our annual Feed the Homeless Dinner in partnership with Macedonia PB Church, Pastor Ananize Green. They gave out 100 turkeys the day before the dinner. And then we picked up all of the homeless individuals and anybody else who wanted to attend from all of the various spots in Huntsville, First Stop Salvation Army, Downtown Rescue Mission, Ry Rose, all of those places, and just had a great time. And Mayor, also, on that day, as you all know, I was not in the parade. I went out to handle that. And also, I had the pleasure, Mayor, and I thank you for that opportunity, to present a resolution to a very distinguished military, military veteran on behalf of the Mayor, Mayor Battle, and the City of Huntsville. And, and it was just overwhelmingly received. So it just makes me happy when I'm able to do things like that. And speaking of doing things, so also a thanks to Mayor Finley, who was there also, and Councilman Powell, who represents that district over on Zert Road. I'm digressing now. And, and Mayor, they ask about you, but we gave them good, good remarks about you, and, which is something I don't usually do, but we did that day. And one more thing before I close. So, this year is going to be a special year for me this Thanksgiving. And let me tell you why. My family has decided to come and visit their little brother, I'm the youngest of nine, for Thanksgiving in my apartment in Providence. So I got my tables situated that I used for the campaign, and I'm going to be smoking turkeys. I'm going to be smoking them in Providence. So to the Fire Department, you know, if you can be on standby, I'm going to pull my commercial grill up in Providence there, and I'm going to be smoking turkeys for my family. And if anybody wants to come by, seriously, I'm, I've got four big turkeys. So they, they, they're going to be enough for most people. And apparently, they heard about my good barbecue mayor. So they're coming up to get some. Thank you, Mr. President. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and be safe and be blessed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. We have no unfinished business items for action. We do have new business items. As we mentioned, 14A, the Administration has asked that we consider this item tonight. It is an ordinance authorized execution and delivery of a bond guarantee agreement between the City and Regions Commercial Equipment Finance LLC and certain related documents and agreements pertaining to the proposed issuance by the Industrial Development Board of the City of Huntsville of the IDB's Industrial Development Bond Series 2017. The Chair moves for Yam's consent to consider this item tonight.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Mr. Keith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Kling?
Aye.
Mr. Culver?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. We have Yam's consent. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Could we get an explanation of this, please, Mayor Battle? Who could do that?
The bonds.
The Sergeant?
Bonds.
The Sergeant, if you could give a brief explanation, then let the attorney tell us it's all legal.
Yes, sir. This is financing for an IDB Development Agreement between the IDB and Aerojet. It's a continuation of a agreement, of a situation that was already approved by Council several months back. And this is the funding that needs to go in place for the development of the facilities.
Thank you. And Council, could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes. Mr. President, my name is Kane Burnett, and my colleague Rod Kanter and I are with the law firm of Bradley, Arant, Bolt, Cummings. And we represent the City and the Industrial Development Board in this matter.
Is all the paperwork in good order?
Yes, Mr. President.
Are you advising the Council to sign it?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmembers, do you have questions? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. B is an introduction of an ordinance declaring certain items surplus and selling them at a public auction. That has been properly introduced. We're now at 15 new business items for consideration or action. Keep in mind that 15Q has been deleted. 15N, O, and P have already been approved. Are there any items you'd like to hold?
Mr. President, I'd like to hold item 15A and 15I.
I'm sorry, I missed the first one.
15A, 15I.
15A and 15I. Are there any others?
15D, please, Mr. President.
15D?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So right now, I have 15A, 15D, and 15I are going to be held for discussion. Last call. We're moving ahead. 15B is a resolution authorizing a mayor to enter a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Revel Events LLC. C is a resolution authorizing a mayor to enter a license agreement between the City of Huntsville and Museum Board of the City of Huntsville. 15E is a resolution authorizing a mayor to sign the plat entitled City Center Phase Two. 15F is a resolution authorizing a mayor to sign the plat entitled Mid-City Subdivision Phase Two. G is a resolution authorizing a mayor to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Garver LLC for land acquisition services for Winchester Road, additional lanes, project number 6509 RD03, and Aldot project number STPHV-DEMO A183. H is a resolution authorizing a mayor an agreement between the City of Huntsville and OMI Inc. for monitoring well installation and sampling for certified TVA megasite, project number 7118 SP02. J is a resolution authorizing a City Clerk Treasurer to invoke Regions Bank letter, credit number 55105849, for Twickenham Village subdivision. K is a resolution authorizing a Clerk Treasurer to invoke First Commercial Bank letter, credit number 1019, for Oakhurst Forest, the additional subdivision. L is a resolution authorizing a Clerk Treasurer to invoke First Commercial Bank letter, credit number 831533235, for Oakwood Estates at Lake Forest subdivision. M is a resolution authorizing a Clerk Treasurer to invoke First Commercial Bank letter, credit number 831730906, for Oakwood Estates at Lake Forest subdivision. R is a resolution authorizing travel expenses. S is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number 17-700 by changing the authorized personnel strength of various departments and funds. T is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donations. U is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number 17700 by changing appropriating funding for various departments and funds. V is a resolution authorizing a mayor to agreements with the low bidders, meaning specifications outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance. W is a resolution authorizing a mayor to enter a special employment agreement between the City of Huntsville and Denise B. Taylor. X is a resolution authorizing a mayor to a special employment agreement between the City of Huntsville and Marty R. Calvert. Y is a request for authorization to advertise and fill two Equipment Tech II positions, grade 13. Z is a request for authorization to advertise and fill the position administrative A, grade 12. The Chair moves for consolidation approval of 15B and C, 15E through H, 15J through M, 15R through Z.
Second.
Motion consolidating approved by the Chair, second by Dr. Robinson. All those in favor in consolidation approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Likewise. They're approved. 15A is a resolution supporting renewal of certain existing local ad valorem school taxes for Huntsville City Schools.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, and second by Mr. Culver. Dr. Robinson, you have a floor.
I believe we have some folks here from the Schools Foundation tonight to speak on behalf of this resolution, if they would. This is an important community concern that will be on the ballot on December 12th. And I think Ms. Fleming is here to address that.
Good evening, Council. I am no replacement for Dr. Aiken or the Board of Education, however. They are actually meeting as well this evening, so they were not able to come. And...
Ms. Fleming, I hate to interrupt you. Could you give your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I forgot. Elizabeth Fleming, 1900 Cedar Ridge Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. Again, we appreciate the Council taking this into consideration. It is vitally important, not only to Huntsville City Schools, but to our three school systems, that these renewals pass on December 12th. We have $58 million in tax renewals on the line between those three systems, and in particular, $37 billion of economic impact for Huntsville City Schools. And that's annually. So with that, I just thank you for your consideration on this resolution and supporting our public education.
Thank you.
It, it is, it's really, really important for people to go vote on December 12th. It's the date of the special election. There's a lot of controversy around that election. I just hope we can all put that aside and go to vote for this tax. It's important to note that it's not a new tax, it's not an increase, and it's not a general fund tax. It is the renewal of a current tax, and it is absolutely essential for our schools. Huntsville City Schools receives $38 million from this tax. Dr. Aiken said that's 15% of the budget. So it would severely impact our school system. If you have an opportunity to read the entire resolution, it identifies some of the really exceptional things our school systems are doing, not the least of which is the, the number of new schools that we have, and this will help pay for those. So this is an absolutely critical tax, and we would ask everyone to go on December 12th and to support this renewal.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Mr. Kling, did you have something to add?
Well, I just want to say, piggybacking off of Dr. Robinson, that I think it's something I would certainly encourage anybody listening to, to support. Again, and it doesn't get said enough, and Dr. Robinson, I think, did a very good job of getting it out there. This is not a new tax. It's a renewal of an existing tax. I think there's been good value received for the previous tax revenues. We've had new schools go up in neighborhoods throughout the entire city, not in one certain area. And it's a great investment because the future of this city is going to be our schools and those students that are in our schools. And I would certainly hope and encourage anyone listening to support it. Again, and it doesn't get said, you can never say it too many times, Dr. Robinson, this is not a new tax. It's a renewal of the existing tax. And again, I think there's been very good value received so far from what we've had from it.
Thank you. Further comments, discussion?
Mr. President, if...
Mayor.
If I might step into this, I put my name down as a sponsor on this, too. One of the things that we, we've got to recognize is that the reason that BOPAR, BOPAR decided to come here is because of the quality of the workforce, that you can provide a career-ready student coming out of your schools, because of the technical expertise of, of the students coming out of our schools, and that's because of the education that we have. If we don't have that kind of education, we don't continue to grow. We don't continue to bring in industry. We don't continue to have jobs and job spell opportunity. We've got to have that opportunity for our young people throughout this community. And to have that, we've got to have a good education. And so that education spells opportunity for young people. It spells value for, for all of us who are past that young people stage, but who, who have homes in the area. Everybody's home. Your value of your home is, is directly linked to the, to the quality of your education. And so each of us have to step out and make sure that we continue to provide the means so that we can have a quality education in this community. And to Ms. Dotz Fleming, thank you so much for your work that you do, and thank you for the work that the Education Foundation is doing. And this, December 12th, I would hope that everybody remembers to go out to vote yes on, on this extension of, of a valuable, valuable asset for our community.
Thank you, Mayor. Further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Culver?
Just a comment. So I was at Ms. Michelle Watkins' Town Hall meeting, and Dr. Aiken's, and I know you were there, and other members of his administration. And while we all agree that there may be some concerns with the school system, and, and we get that, and we've got to deal with that through policy and, and other things in other ways. But my challenge to the group at that meeting was, let's not hold this particular tax issue hostage over whatever, whatever other concerns that we may have. So I'm encouraging everyone, along with my colleagues here on the Council and the Mayor, to go out on December 12th and vote for this no new tax, but an already existing tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. D is a resolution authorizing a mayor to execute a termination of memorandum of understanding for the redevelopment of Council High School property among the City of Huntsville, the Huntsville Housing Authority, and the William Hooper Council Alumni Association, Inc. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Culver, second by Mr. Keith. Discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
If I may, the President of the Association, Ms. Chunn, is here. If she could, if, if she's open, if you're able to, just maybe one or two, if you want to step to the mic and just sort of talk about where this is for you, and a couple of minutes, just to give reference to the City Council.
I would be very happy to. And thank you, Councilman Keith, and to the Mayor Battle, and to all of the members of the Council, citizens of Huntsville. I'm an educator of longstanding 40-year career, New York, Maryland, and Alabama. And my passion is for education. I'm a product of the Huntsville City Schools, and I graduated when there was a different time in the class of 1966 of William Hooper Council High School. Excellent education nonetheless. And so I'm here to lend support to the development of our historic school site for the use of the citizens of Huntsville, and to say that this Alumni Association, following our pipeline of graduation from William Hooper Council High School on to Alabama A&amp;M University and other schools and colleges, really want to be a resource in Huntsville, a positive resource. And we'd like for our historic school to be a, a resource in Huntsville as well. And so we are so happy that we're moving this process along, and we're very happy with the work that our Councilman, our new Councilman, Devin Keith, and Michelle Jordan, and her office, and the City Planners all have done to get us to a rendering for a memorial park that we can endorse and we think is suitable, and one that will serve the citizens of Huntsville in capturing a, a very significant and important and profound memory for us, as a memory and also as a reality for today and for the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chunn.
And if there are any questions, we're in full support of what is being proposed.
Thank you. And thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Trey, could you give an understanding of what it is? Why, why do we need to terminate the memorandum?
There was originally a memorandum of understanding approximately five years ago that was signed between three parties, the William Hooper Council Alumni Association, which Dr. Chunn, of course, represents tonight, the Huntsville Housing Authority, and the City of Huntsville. Between the time... Between the time of that original memorandum of understanding and the termination of it and the moving forward under the current plan, it became evident that the original plan, which was to try to do an adaptive reuse of the remaining buildings on the school, was no longer one that was appropriate to pursue. And the parties have all determined that that should, that that particular MOU or memorandum of understanding should be terminated, and that we've moved forward with a different plan now, which is one which will provide, in an article that I read, an homage to Dr. Council's ideals. And it will do that by providing a beautiful park, a contemplative park, more green space in the center for activities here in downtown Huntsville, close to the library, and on the site of the old school. So it's a very appropriate recognition of what existed there, and, and a good use and a good goal, I think, for these organizations together.
Thank you, Trey. And John, could you give just a quick, brief overview? What is the next step if this is approved tonight?
So, you know, essentially what this does is it makes it just cleaner to, to bring the property back under the direct control of the city so we can work directly with the Alumni Association in, in the redevelopment that was just described. What we've got right now are conceptual renderings that we have produced internally out of the planning department. After, after this, we need to, to put it directly into our more formal design process and ultimately get into construction. I would expect that design process to, to take just a few months, and by sometime in two thousand eighteen, we ought to be able to do construction. There's still some funding pieces that have to be worked. As, as I think most people know, the, the anticipated proceeds from selling the phase two property for the city center development are committed to roll directly into the city's initial commitment into the funding. That will not, in our estimation, fully cover the cost, and there's still, there's still work to be done to refine all those costs based on the design, but I think it gets us quite a ways down the road in terms of the funding. So there's still some questions we'll need to, to answer in terms of how we fund it. And there may be some phase construction or things like that. Those are things that will be determined as we go through the formal design process here in the coming months, but I would anticipate beginning the process during twenty eighteen.
Wonderful. And I want to say to my colleagues very briefly, this project started and preceded me. My hats is off to Ms. Chon and her association. This is, in a sense, a one-eighty of where we originally probably started when they first started this conversation, as you see with the renderings that are in front of you. But there needed to be some conversation of practicality and pragmatism. This was probably started in February, and with, again, like I always will say, Michelle's team, we found commonality in the first step forward. But I do want to say, as we move forward and things come before you, this is not a District One project. This is not for a certain creed or culture or even a community. This is a Huntsville City project. This part will increase the green space downtown. It is just as important as Constitution Village and any other project that we do to represent the history of our city. Not too long ago, Mayor started, "This place matters." Well, this place actually matters as well, and I think that the administration understands the importance of it, and I just want you all to understand, there are graduates from William Hooper Council who live in all five of our districts. So we are not just doing this for District One, we're not just doing this for African-American culture, we're not just doing this for the association. We're doing it in recognition of their legacy, but we're also doing this for the City of Huntsville. So as we move forward, I look forward to your support, and again, I thank the administration and Ms. Jordan and her department, and my hat goes off to Ms. Chon. Thank you.
Further discussion? Dr. Robbins.
The original project was a funding partnership between the city and the Council Alumni Association. Will that model also be used with, to fund this project? Or will this solely be funded by the city?
You know, we certainly would welcome any private fundraising efforts. The scope of that, I think, of what's, of what's reasonable is to be determined, so we owe you answers back on what we think is the full funding package. But this is certainly a project that, that would certainly lend itself well to, I think, to private fundraising and some contributions from the community.
And then finally, I know it's, will, will it be possible to connect it to Big Spring Park so it could become a little bit of an extension of Big Spring Park, or is it to remove with city center in the middle there?
I think it would, it would certainly be connected through the, through the sidewalk infrastructure that exists. There, you know, there are multiple properties that are between it and Big Spring Park, but it's a, it's a pretty short segment out to the Rotary Circle and then down, down into Big Spring Park from there. So it's not that far away, but the, the sidewalk network really has to be used.
Kind of be like a little satellite, maybe.
Right.
Further discussion? Mr. Culver.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. Keith, is this what you want to do?
Yes, sir. So again, this is, you know, if I had an endless amount of money, it would look a lot different, but this is the compromise and the first step. Again, as she was bringing up funding, I think we should do our own due diligence with the money that we have in a very practical sense to make the best effort to not only memorialize the legacy that they have, but also create something downtown that we can be proud of, like we do with Big Spring Park. It is exactly, it is different from what was before me, but this getting done offers an opportunity for not only the residents of Huntsville, but those individuals who come in and out of Huntsville. You go to Kelly Ingram Park in Birmingham, statues that, that show recognition to a history that Birmingham experienced. So in my professional opinion, which isn't worth much, this is a great step, not only for the community of the neighborhood, I mean, of Council's Association, but this is an investment that the city can have for, you know, ongoing for the history of Huntsville.
I just wanted to make sure that you, and I know that you've been working with the Council and the Association, I certainly don't have an issue supporting you on this.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that you, this is what you wanted to do.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Fifteen A is a resolution authorizing mayor into a memorandum of agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and the Huntsville Madison County Marina and Port Authority.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion?
This is another great partnership, the city with Ditto. There are great things going on at Ditto. This, I believe, is going to impact the newly acquired Marina, or the yacht club, and we just, for the public's benefit, like to hear a little bit more about it.
Absolutely, Councilwoman Robinson. What this involves is when you come down Hobbs Island Road and the Parkway, you'll pass up Ditto, obviously, and you come to the old county boat docks. The entrance into that site is somewhat cumbersome, it's a little difficult for traffic to come in and out for years, and, and what we were asked to participate in is to assist the Huntsville Madison Port Authority to establish a new entrance to make it safer for traffic to come into and out of the, the site, and that's to establish a more perpendicular entrance in. If you come back about seventy-five, a hundred, a hundred, a hundred feet from the existing entrance, there's a significant depression there along the ditch. Public Works is asked to come in and participate in some grading, putting some, some culvert in for, for stormwater, and, and establish that perpendicular entrance into the site. Increase site distance, make it a little safer for people to come and go.
So just as the new entrance to Ditto is going to expand the capacity of Ditto, this new entrance into the boat harbor is going to expand the capacity of that boat harbor. It's going to be a great addition and asset to Ditto and to the, to the residents of Madison County.
Absolutely. The landscape's changing down there, they're doing a lot of improvements on both sides, it's, it's really going to be a sight to see upon completion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeese. Councilmembers, other questions, comments? Ms. Quick, if you'd come to the microphone, please. Ms. Quick, if you would introduce yourself for the public's benefit and just tell us briefly what's going on at Ditto and how things are going.
Thank you. My name is Brandy Quick. I'm the Executive Director for the Huntsville Madison County Marina and Port Authority.
Welcome.
Thank you. We have a lot of projects going on. The most visible one that you would see if you came down Hobbs Island Road is to redo the entryway into Ditto Landing, add some, some lakes so that we can gather up some of that water, and expand our campgrounds. So those things are ongoing now. Also, last November, we took ownership of the Madison County Boat Harbor, and we've been doing a lot of cleanup in that area to improve the safety and security of that space for the, for the boathouse owners that want to remain, and also the public that want to use that area. So realigning this entryway is really going to, going to open that up, so it's more visible to improve the safety of the area.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Ms. Quick?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have several routine legal department item transaction. The Chair moves and consolidates and approves sixteen A one, sixteen B one and two, sixteen C one through seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. All those in favor in consolidation approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at non-roster communications for the public. If you'd like to address the Council, please go to the microphone. You have three minutes to address the Council. Mr. Piff.
Thomas Piff, one-one-three-one-four, Delcrest Drive, Huntsville, Alabama. Thank you, Mayor Battle. I applaud your answering question number eight. Can I reasonably expect an answer for questions one through nine from the Governor of my city before the work session on the twelfth of December? And would those answers be available to the broad public as well?
Ms. Piff, is that a question for me or the Council? We will get you responses to your questions.
Will it go to the public? Will it be brought to the...
Everything we do is in the public, and we'll have a work session, and we can discuss the questions in public.
And it will go to the television stations and the newspaper?
If the television stations want to cover it, they're, they're welcome to. We love for them to cover us.
Good, but it is written into the record at this point so that historically we can look back that I asked reasonable questions of the Council and the Mayor, correct?
Reasonable is your term. We'll put the questions in the record.
In that case, I would like to ask you about some indefensible positions. Quietly privatizing our shared City Hall property without our broad informed consent is indefensible. Squandering this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to expand the precious end of our Big Spring Park on private development is indispensable. Herding us out of our symbolic Big Spring and onto styrofoam-filled ditch greenways is indefensible. Supplanting us at the foot of our historic Big Spring with hotel guests and private spaces is indefensible. Valuing a rather unremarkable, no-bid, no-compete local developer above the rest of us is indefensible. Setting any private developer's table with our iconic spring is indefensible. To frame a taxpayer-funded promenade, serving retail space as expanding our legacy park is indefensible. To frame the taxpayer-funded erasure of the developer's two thousand and three building encroachment onto our park as expanding our park is indefensible. Accepting the price of perhaps four upscale houses for our treasure is indefensible. Entertaining the developer's demands for restrictive covenants upon Big Spring Park East is indefensible. To cheerfully agree to egregiously unilateral letters of intent from any developer is indefensible. Destroying an aging but functional, those aren't even important. Thank you.
You're welcome. Would anyone else like to address the Council? Ms. Ree?
Looks like we're going to stay on this City Hall thing. I'm sorry. I would like to know if you could put some of the meetings on channel forty-two. I've been preaching that for four years. We're socializing. That channel ain't nothing but a socializing channel. I would like to see the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, that's got to do with the traffic in this city, which is terrible. I would like to see all these meetings put up on channel forty-two. Do you need to hire somebody to do that? If you don't, if you do, holler at me. I'd like to be in the complaint department, is what I'd like to be in. But anyway, we need some of these meetings put up on that channel forty-two instead of, anyway. And I'd like to know who's paying the utility bills at the schools' properties that the city was so interested in when we were building schools like shopping centers. Who's paying those utility bills? That's all I heard, these big high utility bills, high utility bills. So I was at Gristman the night, and I looked, and I thought, we've absolutely torn down good schools in this city. We have made a mess out of the city, but I just wondered who's paying for the utility bills in the city. I really want to ask you about the Von Braun Civic Center. I really went to the Mayor's speech, he made a good speech, but I was told we don't have enough room. That place had been reserved for two or three days ahead of time, there wasn't enough room for the people to get in. Were no tickets, you couldn't buy a ticket, you couldn't even get in, nobody could. My suggestion to you all is, let's borrow the money to buy the Coke plant, when we were dealing with trying to keep this one out here, too. Buy the Coke plant, put a big convention center over there, and let's have stuff going on every weekend over there. You can borrow any kind of money anytime you want to, and that would just be great. If we don't have enough room at the Von Braun Civic Center for the chosen few little people that's there, there wasn't enough room, you couldn't even get in there. So why the city's not looking to try to do something like that? They'll happy pay for it. I'm sure they will. If I got something else right quick.
Did you pay for her ticket?
Coke Plant Johnson. And I know that Dr. Showers, somebody had promised a million dollars when Showers was sitting up there for Council Corps from city center over here. Are you still holding them accountable to that million dollars? Have you canceled that out? Is that still good? Okay, we need to get all we can out of them, because remember, we gave them a whole lot of property, and we're going to give them a ninety-year lease, and we paid six-point-eight million for the Holiday Inn. We need some money in the city. We need to make these developers put up some fair share. We can't give it all away. Thank you. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
You, too, Ms. Ree. Anyone else wish to address the Council?
Move to adjourn?
We adjourn.